Today is February 23rd, 2021. This is a GBOS special meeting. It is the GFR budget KMTA grant review meeting. The Gurwood Board of Supervisors and committees and subcommittees are subject to the Open Meetings Act. I'm going to call this meeting to your order. My name is Jerry Fox. I am co-chair and roads and utility supervisor. And Mike?
Mike Edgington, co-chair and land use supervisor.
And Erin?
Erin Boone, fire department supervisor.
James?
James Glover, public safety supervisor.
Brianna?
Brianna Sullivan, Parks and Recreation Cemetery Supervisor.
And I know Brendan is one of the phone numbers. And I think it must be...
Brianna, the other one.
Brianna's the other one.
Yes, and just so you know, I might try to... It has to download something, which is why I'm calling in because it's not quite finishing on Teams right now.
Okay. Call to order. Okay, roll call we did disclosures. Does anybody have any disclosures?
I don't know if you've said hello to everyone, but I'm Nikki Rose. I'm from the office of Senator Roger Holland. I'm his chief of staff. I don't know if you can see that. And Senator Holland asked me to join you all today. Looks like you have a full schedule, so I'll let you get to it. But you can contact our office at 465-3623.
Okay. So, I didn't hear any disclosure, so we're going to go on to the agenda approval. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written unless somebody has anything they would like to change in the agenda.
We should approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, voice vote aye.
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 Okay, announcements. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please keep your phone muted until called upon to talk. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. And as always, please be respectful of everyone's opinions. First on the agenda is the Gurwood Fire Department Budget Revisions and EMS Funding. Kyle, you want to start us off?
Sure. So, the wheels are in motion on this right now. The chief Weston has been working with AFD Finance Manager on refining the budget for the first quarter revisions. And that has now been sent to the fire chief. And I got a phone call from legal department asking questions about it. So, things are moving along. We're hoping to hear something more this week, hopefully midweek, about where these budget numbers will go going forward. So, which depending on the timeline could either lead to the next regular meeting or a call for a special meeting depending on what happens. At this point, no major update to report.
And so...
I'm sorry.
What I was going to say is, you know, for first quarter revisions, just making sure we still have time.
I think we do. We do. You know, departments are supposed to turn in their first quarter revisions by the end of this week. And then that's when OMB and administration gets a hold of them and they start talking about it. Usually talk about them over a month or longer before they settle on what they're going to oppose to the assembly.
Okay. Michelle, you had a comment?
I was just going to say, this week is a perfect example of why we need to improve the funding situation. We had 16 calls this week, all EMS.
Wow.
Right. And three times we had to call for have Station 9 come down and cover us. That's not because we didn't have staffing. That's because all of our ambulances were utilized. And of those 16 calls, I believe there was only two patient refusals. So, that's a lot of ambulance utilization if you think of the fact that each ambulance calls at least three to four hours.
Good example.
So, that's a prime.
Good example of why we need more EMS funding. And I understand that we're seeming to get closer. So, thanks for all your hard work on that.
Yes, we're spending about two to three hours a day working with AFD right now on the numbers. And I know Chief Hetrick asked for another revision this morning. We worked on it this morning, so we're hoping to hear something soon.
And I think the best thing for today would probably just to keep moving on with the meeting. And then we may have to have a special meeting if we get more numbers. Because I'd like to make this happen as soon as possible and not wait for the next GBOS meeting if we can get some more numbers.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else on this topic or I'm going to move forward? So, number two is the Gurwood Trails Committee pending request for GBOS Resolution of Support for KMTA Matching Grant for the research, writing, design, fabrication, and installation of interpretive signs for Stumpy's Trail. And do I have somebody to speak on this?
Yeah, I could talk to it first and then... So, coming out of the last Gurwood Trails Committee meeting, it was suggested by the committee that we pursue a grant for interpretive sign for Stumpy's Winter Trail. And the motivation was really being driven by Patty Hamery, the daughter of Stumpy, and to help moralize her dad and his adventure in trails within the Gurwood Valley here. And so, with that, we met with Patty. I met with Patty and discussed it. From a staff perspective after the meeting, we were a little bit concerned about trying to make it happen real quick. You know, grant application does take time. But we definitely found volunteers who wanted to make this happen. And Patty really wanted to try to go after this grant. Our suggestion was maybe wait a year. The KMTA grant cycle now is once a year. It's in the fall, in the spring each year. And so, we suggested maybe we just wait a year and tackle next year. And Patty really felt that she's been working hard on this and the iron was hot, so she wanted to proceed. So, we're trying to move forward with getting a grant application in. The reason we bring this request to you today before it goes to Trails is because it is... The grant application is due on the 15th, which is before the next GBOS meeting. So, we introduced this to you as new business at your last meeting and today as old business. And the resolution here would be contingent on the Gurwood Trails Committee approving this grant application and for staff to carry the work forward on it. So, the Gurwood Trails Committee still needs to discuss it at their next meeting and review it. But this application or this resolution of support would just help strengthen our application packet for the grant if it decided to move forward on it. So, the location that we're currently thinking for this sign, let me see here. I can show you real quick so you can get a better understanding of it. I can pull it up. Here we go. Location that we're looking on this sign is at the Nordic parking lot, the end of Alberg there at the 5K. We...I proposed two areas and Patty preferred this one as it was closer to the Winter Trail and the area. The other area that we proposed was at Moose Meadows, near the sign that has Stumpy's name on it. And she preferred this location. And the location that we're considering is, if you haven't been out there, is up by the garbage can and working that more as an information center and then also, you know, access to the garbage can and dog bags. And so, we would probably repurpose this area with putting a gravel pad in here. The sign wouldn't be facing this way, but it'd be probably sideways to the parking lot. And the hope is that it attracts people there, gives them understanding. And we may add one more trail sign next to it that gives a trail map associated with it. But that would probably be separate from this grant, but we could tag it on to the existing structure that we build for this interpretive sign. So, this would be the location for it out there at the end of the park, at the end of the road. The grant is a 50-50 match and Gurwood Trails Committee would use their funds to match it. Most of it probably would come through volunteer labor in the creation of the sign and the time put in to make it happen, as we've seen with other grants like this. And the sign would be very similar, I don't have a picture, but very similar to what was put out, the Beaver Pond entrance out there. And those signs will be similar to what's going to be installed on the lower Ditterott. So, that is kind of what we're looking at, pursuing. And let me switch screens back here to the resolution so you guys can see that. However, I do that. Sorry. Here we go. Okay, we're back. So, yep, that's what we're looking at, what I had to say.
Okay. Now, Erin, you had your hand up. You have a question?
Yeah, I was just curious, where does Stumpy's Winter Trail officially start? Or where's the start and end of it?
Well, it officially started at the Moose Meadows parking lot because that's where the end of the road used to be. Until the hotel was developed, Moose Meadows parking lot, you know, the last residential home there was the end of the road. So, it did start there. So, you know, for Stumpy, he lived on Alieska Highway there and then went head over the Moose Meadows and then ski up Valley from there, you know. And the Moose Meadows has become basically known as the Moose Meadows Track, but it's part of the Stumpy Winter Trail. And then, once he gets up Valley, what is today is the groom section going up to connect up to the cat track is the trail that he would use to go up to those meadows there, according to Patty. So, yeah, she preferred that area over there because it was more sentimental to her when we suggested putting it at Moose Meadows.
Okay, thanks. And then, is the sign, the style of the sign, is it like a kiosk with a roof? Does it have a roof over it or is it just a simple vertical sign?
Have you been out to the Beaver Pond to see the signs that were put in there? It'd be very...
Yeah.
It's going to be just like that. It's sort of the, we want a standardization. Patty did mention putting a roof over it and things like that. And from Parks and Rec perspective, we're not very excited about that because it just creates additional maintenance in the long run. And these signs that we're getting made now, you know, they have a 10-year warranty for how well they last out there and how they function.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm looking for other comments or questions. I am not hearing any. You see any hands from the board, any from the public? Barb?
This is...oh, sorry.
I was just going to put in that I've communicated with Shelley Routen at Heritage Land Bank and it's a little more complicated, I think, perhaps, to do the Alberg Lot than down by Moose Meadows because of the land ownership. But she felt that as long as we were near the trash can and kind of grouped together all our infrastructure, so to speak, that there wouldn't be a problem. And I've also applied for the Section 106 clearance for that site, which is the archaeological stuff.
And I confirmed that as well. We would actually be placing it within the right of way, which it wouldn't complicate the process to install it there. It's the road right of way I'm talking about. Brendan, go ahead.
Yeah. Brendan, you have a comment?
Yeah. Hi, thanks. Yeah, at a broad level, I think nobody would be surprised by me pointing out that I think Stumpy's Trails are an important resource in a lot of ways to Gurwood. I think they're the crown jewel of our primitive trails. But in terms of the resolution itself, you know, I can't talk about the substance of the resolution other than what I said, but just the process because there aren't, you know, as Kyle kind of outlined, many details yet to really consider. And so, that's actually kind of the point of what I wanted to say today. I think that going about things like this where GBOS votes on something before there are details available about what you're voting on is not really good practice. It actually has led to problems in the past and I think will kind of contribute to perpetuating them moving forward. And I understand there's a deadline, but I think to my mind, you guys should be taking up items for vote after having the final details about what you're voting on. And I guess, kind of related to that as well, I want to point out too that, you know, people often point out during public processes that involve multiple bodies in the muni that there's an opportunity to comment at various stages. But I and other people have often noticed that in practice, the first body is really the only one that matters and subsequent bodies essentially end up being little more than rubber stamps with no real opportunity to sort of meaningfully impact the process. And that's not how public process is supposed to work. And I think voting here on this would just kind of support that not great approach because it means your consideration of the item, you know, is sort of kind of a rubber stamp. So, that's my concerns and I don't know how you'd be able to work through those. But that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Mike, you have a comment?
Yeah, I agree with Brendan in principle, at least on the first part, that I'd be much happier if we voted when we knew the details. I understand that in this case, there's a time crunch as well, so it's a little less clear cut. As the second point about the everything is a rubber stamp except for the first body, I think we can point to perhaps the gunnysack development. There's been an example where it does not work that way. And I think in many cases, it doesn't work that way, that whatever earlier bodies decide, there's kind of an opportunity to revisit. And sometimes that's a problem, not an advantage of it. So, I think it's, you know, that broad statement is, I think, very unprecise.
Any other comments or questions?
Hi, this is Brendan. Can I make another comment?
Sure.
I just wanted to point out that... Well, I guess I wanted to clarify that what I was saying is that I've noticed that in practice in a number of instances, but I'm not trying to say that that happens all the time. But that's all I just wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. I would entertain a motion. I'm telling you to read the resolution into the record. And I guess it probably would be best if Brianna, if you read it.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question. Do you have the motion in front of you?
I do, from the packet. So, I have my computer open now, yes. Okay. Resolution 2021 XX of the Gurwood Board of Supervisors. Resolution in support of KMTA grant application for Stumpy's Trail interpretive sign. Whereas throughout the 50 years that Sewell Stumpy Faulkner lived in Alaska, he contributed to the trail systems in Gurwood and Anchorage and served in many offices and commissions, including tenure as a member of the Gurwood Board of Supervisors. And whereas Sewell Stumpy Faulkner carefully maintained his favorite roots in Gurwood and cherished introducing friends and family to these special locations over the course of many years. And whereas Gurwood Trails Committee aims to continue this tradition while recognizing the mission of the Gurwood Trails Committee to maintain and share special places, enhancing trails in the Gurwood for all current and future trail users. And whereas Gurwood Trails Committee seeks to provide a positive trail experience to residents and visitors through trail amenities such as educational interpretive signage. And whereas Gurwood Trails Committee can apply for a grant from the Kenai Mountains Turnigan Arm National Heritage Area, KMTA, to work on research, design, production, and installation of interpretive signage and can match funds with those received from private donations, in-kind donations, and municipal funds. Whereas the Gurwood Trails Committee voted XX2XX at their March 2nd, 2021 meeting to recommend this resolution of support to be included in the KMTA grant application. Whereas the Gurwood Board of Supervisors appreciates the commitment and longstanding relationship with KMTA and pursuit of our shared goals in community and youth involvement to increase public awareness and appreciation for the natural, historical, and cultural resources in the heritage area. Therefore, the Gurwood Board of Supervisors supports the Gurwood Trails Committee's grant application to KMTA for interpretive signage to commemorate the legacy of Sewell Stumpy Faulkner and the trails that he helped to create, passed and approved by a vote of XX2 the blank day of March 2021.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion?
I have a question. So, this, I'm assuming that the Trails Committee will have a similar resolution with the same wording? And if anything changes during the meeting, the Trails meeting, then it would come back to us?
Well, keep in mind Trails Committee and like LUC, they don't write their own resolutions. They write a motion. But they, at the next meeting, at the Gurwood Trails Committee, can decide that if, for some reason, they don't want to accept this resolution, they don't have to take it. And they could send a request back to GBOS to have GBOS have a special meeting to reconsider the language within this resolution. And so, it's still within their means to say, you know, this is the resolution that has been approved by GBOS, as long as Gurwood Trails Committee accepts it. If they don't accept it, then they don't have to use it in their packet or they can call for GBOS to have a special meeting so that new language can be considered for the resolution.
Okay.
Any other further discussion or comments? Anybody want to raise their hand? Mike?
I do have a question. This kind of ties back to Brendan's comment. So, do we know, do we actually know enough to say where the sign is located? Or is that a decision to be made? Because I would be much happier voting on it if I knew where it was going to be.
That's the location that we're going to pursue to put this sign in. And that's the wish of the family to have it there. So, that would make the...
Could we amend this to have a statement about the location?
If you want to, yes. If you want to amend it to state it there.
Would anyone mind or is that...? I don't want to...
No, I would like that.
Yeah, I don't mind. I'm looking at the whereas is where we could insert it.
Oh, we could just put it... Or we could just actually add it to the therefore. So, interpretive signage at X to commemorate the legacy of Sewell Stumpy Faulkner.
Right.
So, I'm proposing that amendment that we add the location in the therefore after the words interpretive signage and before to commemorate. So, interpretive signage at the Alberg Extension Trailhead.
Sounds like I get that.
And just to be clear, you're talking about in the actual title of the resolution?
No, in the therefore.
The last line.
The therefore statement, the last paragraph.
Got it. Okay. Now, I'm clear. Okay, so I've heard a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I guess you have an amendment to the motion, right?
Yes. Right. I'm talking about that, I'm sorry. I said a motion. I meant an amendment and a second to the amendment. Hearing none. Kyle, could you call a vote?
Sure. Jerry Fox?
Yes, in favor.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
James Glover? James, you might be on mute there. I'll come back to you. Erin Boone?
Yes, and this is on the amendment?
Yes.
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 The application. James Glover?
I'm looking at the thing and he's still on mute, so...
All right, I don't hear James, but the motion passes 4-0.
Okay. Next, I would... We have a motion and we have amendment to the motion. I don't think we have to have any other... I think we can call for a vote on the motion with the amendment. Am I correct on that?
Yep, you're back. Yeah, you have a motion that's amended, so you're back to that.
I will make...I'm going to call for a vote on the motion with the amendment.
Sorry, can I just ask a question? So, the way I interpreted earlier comments was the, there was some uncertainty about location. So, I think we've clarified that. I don't think apart from that, there's really much of a question. So, I'm happy to go forward and approve this as stands.
Okay. Kyle, can you call for the vote?
Sure. Jerry Fox?
Yes, in favor.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Erin Boone?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
James Glover?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the big topic of the day, which is we're going to review the budget of the 2020.
Correct.
Kyle always does a great job on this and Kyle, I appreciate you and Margaret's work on this.
Well, let me pull it up. I'm going to pull it up in Excel format because it just works a little bit better compared to the PDF.
I just want to say I do apologize that I've hooked this other thing I have to go to at 12:30, but I will be back at 1:00. I hate doing this, but I do apologize.
No problem, Mike. And you can put your hand down.
Yep, I'll just leave.
There you go.
Good. Okay. Well, let's start with Gurwood Parks and Rec and talk about the budget for the year. So, we, if anything, we had a bit of overrun with our staffing, but that was called out because we didn't hire SDA crew in 2020 because of COVID. But we were able to get two full-time seasonal staff muni employed on, which we had never done before. The most we ever had was a part-time muni staff that worked for us seasonally. So, Amanda and Zach were great and we kept them employed all the way through October, which was really great. But if anything of the budgets, this and the fire department budgets actually had surpluses because of things related to COVID and we'll get into the fire department. But mostly, we held off on some projects and one being the SCA crews, which were, in the end, would have been more expensive than our seasonal employees, but we get a lot more people with it. And so, we had a surplus there of $40,000 for the Parks and Rec budget, which now has dropped into our undesignated account. So, that ended up in that location and so indirectly mostly tied to the fact that we didn't do contracted services as much as we would have with the projects. So, whereas this year, we definitely have a lot more on the slate to tackle and shouldn't have as much of a problem. But we all, our contributions moved through. So, we put another 150 into our capital account for the next park project now that we've completed the flasher project. Just so you know, with the pedestrian flasher, we have submitted the second and final request from the state. So, the state should reimburse us for all the pedestrian crosswalk crossing there with money that was left over from the Alieska Highway improvements. And then, we are currently right now working on submitting a reimbursement for the safety improvements that we have made on the pedestrian pathway with the temporary bollards that have the signs on it and the stencils that were painted on the ground. And this spring, we'll be tackling the lines on the swoops that pull those lines closer into the intersections and away from the highway and get those repainted and engraved so that they will stay there and not get scraped off with winter plowing. So, yeah, that's the basic overrun with Parks and Rec. And I'll open up for any questions, any that has related to this budget for 2020.
I have a question, Kyle. For the flasher project, you know, the second reimbursement was submitted and that you said that money goes back into the Parks and Rec capital account or just indesignated?
It'll go back into the Parks and Rec capital account because that's where the money came from to pay for that project. So, the first one, that's where it got redistributed to and the second one will do that. So, it's basically reimbursing the money that was taken out to pay for that project.
Yep. And so then, but the lines that we're drawing and the bollards and stuff, does that go back into the Parks and Rec also?
Correct, it does. Yes, yeah, we're paying for that out of the Parks and Rec since it's a recreational bike path. Correct, it does, yes, yeah, we're paying for that out of the Parks and Rec, since it's a recreational bike path.
And I've got my sheet here, but I'll just ask you rather than look around, are you gonna give an update on the capital accounts today?
I am not planning on doing that today, I, I, I just giving a review of what we spent in 2020. But I can give a date at the next meeting if you like on the capital accounts.
It's probably a good idea, I mean, I'm just off the top of my head, I'm thinking we're gonna have a substantial amount of money in the Parks and Rec budget coming up.
Correct, yep, and, and you know, the next thing that was on our slate for Parks and Rec was to look at the Moose Meadows Parking Area Playfield and all that up there. And so that may be the next area that we're, we're gonna start to focus in on. But you know, with the Trails Plan being in process right now, all kinds of projects are, are now appearing that, you know, we wanted to, you know, tackle over the next ten to twenty years, so. So we'll, we'll present what we have.
Yeah, good, any other comments on the Parks and Rec budget?
I was just gonna comment, the dog park is another possible place we might want to spend money, right?
Correct, and you know, and I think it's just a matter of where things fall in priority and as, as we go and, you know, yep. And Shelley and I are working through that dog park concept, you know, as we said at the last meeting, there's some issues there associated with the plat and the requirement to improve the road. If we put a parking lot in, and we're also waiting for that Chapter Nine change. That doesn't require us to pave the parking lot, so, so that may get bumped, but we'll see, you know, we're trying to, trying to work as much as we can with the limited amount of funding that we have.
Any other comments about the Parks and Rec budget? Hearing none, I guess we can go on to the next one, Kyle, just to, as always, say thanks. Gerwood gets better every day, you and Margaret do a great job, and everybody getting the trails and parks and everything, so thanks.
No problem, let's talk about police and our police contract. So last year was our first year under a new three-year contract with Whittier Police to continue police services for Gerwood. And so as you can see here, we had. About five thousand, six thousand left over for the year. And that mostly had to do with. Our, sort of what we call our miscellaneous account, towing and signage for major events and, and responses like that. We had bulked up that budget going in the 2020 to deal with Slush Cup and, and Forest Fair and, and. And the different events that brought a lot of people to town, you know, establishing a towing and things like that, well, COVID happened, those events didn't happen. So we had less of those type of things, we did tow quite a bit last year, we towed. I think I towed at least twelve cars, we probably tagged over thirty cars that were either left abandoned or, or obstructing snow removal or things along those lines. And Whittier Police were very supportive of that, and we also found a good tow company in Fred's Towing who was very responsive. They have a very handy app for your phone, and I can tag and get cars in process removal within minutes. So that was a much nicer format, so, so overall. The budget was pretty good there, we also had a cost savings in the sense of our rental. ACS to give us a break rental for a month because of repairs that they were doing at the facility. And it was obstructing, just making it more difficult for the officers to get in the building, so we, we saw some savings there. Plus, the rental rate went down because we finished the three-year term with them on repaying the improvements that we asked them to make to the, to the office for the substation there. So we're paying a lower rental rate now for all that, so, so yeah, that's kind of an overview of the police contract. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we don't, we're not gonna see a consumer price index, a CPI increase. As called out in the contract for 2021 with Whittier Police, because there is no increase. So the contract rate will stay the same for 2021, so we won't have a revision there for that.
Aaron, you have a question?
Yeah, I was curious about the rental fee, is that showing up under the Public Utility Services?
Yes, yeah, it, it, it's very confusing, and so we just, we just kept it that way, but. ACS, when they bill for the rentals, it comes on a bill sheet that looks just like a telephone bill, so. Once they, once this, at the beginning of the year, there was a new accounting person, and she locked it in at the communications, and I just said, keep it there. We're fine with that, so it, it either ended up in communications or a public utility service, so.
Any other questions about the police budget? Again, thanks, Kyle, I mean, the, getting the towing thing under control is a big deal, that's been a pain in your side and everybody's side for a while. So kind of getting a plan for that is great news.
Yes, yeah, and we're in also final stages on working with. The Parking Authority and Anchorage to give a ticket book to Whittier Police on that, Whittier Police has been using the state statute, but it's a bit more of a. It's, it's a bit, bit more of a hassle because they have to work through. State courts on that, and so working with the Parking Authority and Anchorage, Parking Authority has their own ticketing process for appeals and, and collecting payments and things like that, so. So hopefully that will make it better in that aspect, but you know, the one thing that we did do in 2020, I forgot to mention, is that we did set up a impound yard on New Year's Eve. And, and worked with the tow company to position a tow truck here. It was a request from the Public Safety Advisory Committee, and that worked out really nice, we ended up actually towing and pounding two cars that night. You know, New Year's was much more tame this year because there wasn't the fireworks at the hill and the torchlight parade, well, the, the official torchlight parade. There was a torchlight parade, but it was unofficial, and so there's just less people to deal with and, but we did have some cars that needed to be removed. And they were impounded, and the contractor was able to offset some of their costs, because the hotel room for the night was quite expensive, so, so it worked out nicely.
Is the issue about being able to write muni parking tickets something we should put on the muni GBOS? Budget agenda, not budget, but meeting agenda?
I don't think so, because you know, we, with us working with the Parking Authority, that's when we can use that to, to do. Muni code level violations, so with that, with that Parking Authority ticket book, that gives them the power to, to write. Violations for muni codes that aren't called out in state statute, so, so no, I don't think so, I think we, we got that all resolved with the election. And when the, the initiative was voted on to allow for Gerwood to contract with somebody else to do parking enforcement. Whereas in Anchorage, anywhere outside of downtown, only people can do parking enforcement is, is APD. And APD has the same agreement with the Anchorage Parking Authority, so when APD offer, take, excuse me, APD officer writes a ticket. That ticket goes to the Parking Authority and they handle all the process for, for, for APD, so it's very similar to what we're doing.
Oh, so I, I misunderstood, I guess, so we are able to write Parking Authority tickets?
Once we get this, get this agreement completed with the, with the Parking Authority downtown.
And you're not having any problem with that?
No, it's just most of legality, and it maybe be more on Whittier's side as to how this works out, so that, that's the things we're working through.
Okay. Anything else about police, for anybody have a comment, question? Hearing none, you can go on to your next, probably roads, I would guess.
Actually, I'm gonna go to fire, since it's next to the, the thing. So with fire, you know, we had a lot of budget issues to deal with this year with the shortfall and, and moving things around. But in the end, it will show that the fire budget had a surplus. Of fifty-six thousand dollars, that's because unfortunately, just the way things worked at the end of the year. You know, a portion of the contribution that was supposed to go to capital got used to cover the shortfall for the, for the fire department in their operating budget. Since they are contracted, you know, there's a contracted amount that's set every year, and forty thousand dollars was needed to help cover the last portion of, of the year. For, for the, for the contracted fire department. And you know, originally, the contract or the budget was set that seventy-four thousand dollars was gonna be the contribution to the fire capital account. Which helps to purchase apparatuses, turnouts, you know, all kinds of things, equipment-wise for the fire department. And so when the forty thousand got moved over, that left a, a bit of money behind, plus the fire department didn't spend the, the. Now, I mean by the fire department, Anchorage Fire Department, which provides all the maintenance for the vehicles down here, didn't spend the full amount. We had thirty thousand dollars budgeted, they only spent eighty-five hundred of that thirty thousand dollars for, for parts needed for equipment on the, on the apparatuses. So when you total those two together, we ended up with. A surplus of fifty thousand, fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and one dollars and fourteen cents, so they basically had a surplus showing on our side. Whereas the contracted nonprofit that runs the fire department, you know, was struggling on their side to, to. Cover all their operational expenses for 2020, and so, so that's what happened. We did try desperately, tried to move those funds at the very end, but we just ran out of time to make it work through the assembly schedule. You know, each time we make a contribution to capital, we have to submit it to the assembly, it gets put as, as new business, and then it gets a public hearing on the backside at another meeting. And unfortunately, just the way, we didn't know exactly what the, the shortfall was gonna be for the fire department until the very end, and we just ran out of calendar. So that money has fallen into the undesigned account. And so depending on what happens with the 2021 budget, you know, if, if. If, you know, the costs increase for the fire department on the fireside, it may, our undesigned account may. If our, if our budget stays completely flat from last year, our undesigned account will look much larger this year, and at that point, you know, you can move money. But if for some reason our operating budgets increase for 2021. Money needs to come out of the designated account to go into designated things like our, our, our emergency fund and things like that. Our emergency fund, our, our contribution for bonding, things along those lines, is a percentage of what our total operating budget is. So if our total operating budget increases, those funds need to go up too to match what that, what, what that increase is for our overall operating budget. So, so we'll know more after the first quarter revisions as to what our undesigned account looks like. And we can have a discussion there if we wanted to move money and, and, and restore what we did have available for the contribution to the Gerwood Fire, Fire Department.
I understood all that, I don't know if everybody else did, but I.
Long-winded, and that's very technical.
Yeah, but you explained it well, Aaron, you have a question?
Yeah, so I just wanted to confirm, so the fifty-seven thousand that is remaining includes the forty thousand that we put in, we put in from the capital account?
It does not, so. What, what the fifty-seven thousand is comprised of is. Is, is, excuse me, is eleven thousand dollars that was left over from capital. And so, excuse me, from operating, so eleven thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars was left over, and that's, that was mostly related to the funds that weren't spent for. Parts for apparatuses, and then thirty-four thousand was left over from. The contribution that was given to, well, the money that was given to help cover the, the shortfall for the fire department's operating budget. And so, and then there was IGC, so intergovernment charges, and the full budget wasn't spent there for that, and so there was eleven thousand dollars there. So when you add all these up, you know, we're, we're getting into the fifty-seven thousand dollars.
So, you know, I think what Aaron's kind of coming up with is the same thing, you know, we said that we would return any money that was not used from the capital. That we were, they thought they might have to use for operating, and that, if we were to do that, would have been thirty-four thousand, but we cannot do that because. Of the way the budget cycle works, we'd have to move it in a separate resolution.
Correct, and we have to see what our undesigned account looks like once that is audited, which is usually in June, when they audit the undesigned accounts for the service area.
But that would be something the board could think about, would be whether they want to return the thirty-four thousand that was not used for operating expenses of. So they only used six thousand of the forty thousand. Does that make sense, Kyle?
No, you used six thousand of the forty thousand, I don't understand that.
Well, we moved forty thousand from the capital account, right?
Correct, and we gave it to the fire department for using for their shortfall.
And I, my understanding was thirty-four thousand of that was not used.
Correct, so if you're looking at the line here, let's look at line fifty-eight. Zero five-three, it's contribution to other funds, and you'll see that. From that, we moved forty thousand of that up into the contribution to the contract. And so forty thousand of that line was given to the contract. And, and, and so we ended up with thirty-four thousand left over that wasn't used for anything. It just fell, and it, so it fell into the undesigned account, now that money should have gone to the capital account, but it didn't, because we didn't have enough time.
So that's kind of what I was saying, I was saying, if they wanted to, you know, if the board wanted to move that thirty-four thousand dollars back to capital.
Correct.
That would kind of be what we decided, we, we kind of said we would do, and there would be six thousand overages. From, for this year that would have been used from the capital account.
Correct, yep.
Michelle, yep, go ahead, Kyle.
No, go ahead, Michelle.
I just wanted to mention that we are probably one week out of closing out our books for 2022. So, so we'll know, probably by the end of next week, a final amount on the nonprofit side of things on spending.
Okay, and we can talk about that when we hear more about the emergency response number from the muni.
Correct.
Yep. Other, go ahead, Aaron, it looks like you have a comment?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, we could consider. Putting forty thousand. Well, or I guess not necessarily forty, but we could put beyond the thirty-four thousand into capital, because there were other. Things that we didn't spend, like the. Anchorage working on the vehicles, there was other excess money, so that's something that we could think about, right?
Yes, you could, and you, you could evaluate as to, and this would be a, a larger discussion, but once we get an audited expense for our undesigned account. You, we can find, you know, you, you, let's say we get an audit and it's four hundred thousand dollars in the undesigned account, you can move as much as you want from that account. I usually always give a guideline of keeping two hundred thousand in that account, just because it's a nice safety rainy day fund. In case we have to, something major happens and our emergency fund can't cover it, and we need just a little bit more to get us going on something. So yeah, there, there's room to discuss there, and you can take the money and draw that account down and move it in different directions as to where you want to make a contribution to capital.
And we should all kind of think about that when we know a better number from the muni for emergency response area-wide.
Correct, that will be a different factor.
Yes, Michelle, do you have another comment, or is your hand just still raised?
No, I just wanted to know, is there any, any, I know we usually do the capital contribution at the end of the year. Is there any downside between doing like in the first or second quarter, the capital contribution to ensure that it happens every year?
Well, the only reason that we haven't done it is because we've been worried about these shortfalls with the operating budget, so. If we get more security with these contract negotiations and, you know, a, a budget increase for the, for the contract, then yes. And, and, and I would probably be looking to you, Chief, as you feel comfortable, because once we move those monies to capital, they're extremely difficult to get back. It's quite a process, whereas when they're in this, this budget right now, they're, they're liquid, and it's easy for us to have a meeting, make a call and move those funds.
Okay, I'm just thinking, you know. Okay, I'm just thinking, you know, we always have challenges and wouldn't it be nice to just say off the bat at the beginning of the year, we know that money isn't there. Right? So, okay.
I'm on board with that. I won't move it anytime you want because I'd rather see it in capital, so. Okay.
Other comments on the fire budget? And thank you, Michelle, for, it looks like we came in fairly close to what was budgeted. So thanks. I know it was a stressful year for you. So thank you. I guess we're up to roads, Kyle.
Sure. All right. So we'll do the roads. The first section here on roads is our non-labor, excuse me, our labor section of the budget. So this is where Margaret and I's salaries and benefits are paid out of. So we live within, you know, our, we're assigned to the Public Works Department. So we live within this area. And so you can see our total budget costs here. We were over this year. It wasn't because of salary, it was because of benefits and things along those lines. So the Muni tries to get the best estimate on what the benefits will cost for us. And as you can see, we like the medical dental, we're over there. And then accrual was over as well because, like, for example, with me, I've been here for nine years. I try to use vacation as much as I can, but it's sometimes difficult to get away. And so at some point, they just cash me out for vacation time that hasn't been used. So you can see in that line there. So overall, in our labor, we were over by close to five thousand dollars in that line. So and that's something that I I watch as we go because it affects our non-operating, our non-labor section to make sure that if we're looking at overages with our labor, we try to control the the non-labor to to hopefully deal with any shortages, shortfalls that we're looking at. So getting down into here, this is our labor sec, our non-labor section. So this is where we pay for all expenses with street maintenance, including that to the contractor, Coolico, who's our our street contractor, we pay out of this area here. And so in this area, we'll also buy things like culverts, recycled asphalt, striping, when we do a restriping project, you know, like this year we'll do in Town Square, we'll go through and restripe all the parking spots and the curb lines and all those things. We pay for it out of this area, especially in our repair and maintenance contract area there. So or our repair and maintenance supply, one of the two, we use it in that line there. So and you'll find expenses for our office in here, you know, and and our operating supplies in that aspect. So sometimes our operating supplies will be split between our repair and maintenance supplies, just depending on how we purchase them for the service area. If it's some new tool or something like that, it'll end up in that line. Getting down into our contracted services, this is the bulk of this non-labor area. We were budgeted to spend six hundred thousand this year. For the first time ever, we went over that six hundred thousand mark with six hundred and one thousand that we spent. Basically, it's rounded up to six hundred and two thousand. That's just because it was a busy fall. Usually from October through at least mid-December, things are fairly quiet weather-wise, but the snow came early this year. And then on top of that, we had several rain events, then which turned everything to ice. And so we're doing ice management from either peeling ice to sanding. And it was just a busy month, especially in December. It was, it was quite steady. And we were responding almost every other day and then doing cleanup in the days in between. So we ended up going over. Usually I reserve a hundred and twenty five thousand for the last three months of the year. And this year we exceeded that. So, which is sort of unusual. We don't, we don't see that all the time. But overall, in our non-labor, we were still had a surplus of fourteen thousand because we bought less product. We got a great deal this year on recycled asphalt. There were several repay projects going on, either from turning an arm or from in town. And there were people just looking to get rid of recycled asphalt, which to me is like gold. Recycled asphalt, we relay it on the roads, it hardens the roads, it's a great surface, it reduces potholing. And and it's easy to repair with with cold patch material, things like that. So and and it also sets up the crown of the road really well. If you've been over the Aliaska View, we applied quite a bit of rap over there and that road was very flat and a challenge to maintain. And we brought in live material and produced a nice three percent crown through that section. And and that was a great expense for us, a great return on our expense, I should say. And so overall, so overall, for the budget, we did make our capital contribution. You know, roads is the smallest of all the departments. We only do twenty five thousand and I think that's something that we need to explore as the, in the coming years, that we put more of a contribution because our infrastructure is aging. We have a lot of new infrastructure that has a lot of like curb and gutter and things like that. And over time, that will age out and need to be replaced. And we have to do it on our own. There's no longer, you know, go to state and ask for a grant. Those resources aren't there anymore and we have to figure out how to pay for these these repairs as we grow older. But overall, we had a surplus of ten thousand dollars from the for the roads for two thousand twenty there. So open up for questions.
I only have one question. Do you ever use the chair three parking lot?
Yeah, I used to. I don't know as much now because the kids ski off chair four, but yeah, why?
Well, the reason I ask that is because going up there, there is a huge pothole going up there, which I know about now, so I go around it. So I'm fine with it. But sometime this spring, when it clears up, that's a pothole that will need to be fixed.
And I know what you're talking about. We've been dealing with those potholes all over town. Those those warmups that we got, well, we got several of those pineapple expresses that came in. And what it did is it warmed up the sewer system. And so the pothole or the manholes warm up and then it melts all the ice. And just the way things went with, you know, we would get snowstorms and then we'd get rain. We just ended up with this snowpack that we can't get off. The crews are out today actually peeling down. Again, we're just trying to break these these snow packs down so that we can, or this ice pack down so that we can deal with that. So what we've been doing, we've gone around and trying to refill those potholes with snow and ice and and then trying to add a little water when it's cold. But they just keep warming up because the sewer system is just producing heat.
What about the new contract? You have anything new to talk about there?
Well, we, I confirmed the documents yesterday with purchasing and she told me that hopefully she will have it out tomorrow on the street for bidding. So if that's the case, most likely it'll probably be three weeks for review, could be four weeks. And so we'll probably look in at the middle to the, you know, third or fourth week of March for a opening of the bid documents. And then at that point, we'll find out who's the lowest bidder. We'll do an inspection of all their equipment or their leases for their equipment that they're going to provide for the contract and then we'll make a final determination for award. So we're hoping to have it, I'm hoping to have it wrapped up by the first week of April. And then that gives us a transition of about three weeks and then a new contractor will start May first.
Well, as always, I'd like to thank you for all your hard work on the roads, Kyle. I know it's up early every morning and lots of work. And I think we have a good system in place now that works really well. Any comments from the board? Hearing none, I see one from the public. Christina, you have your hand up.
Thanks, Jerry. I wanted to pipe in and advocate my support for additional contributions to the capital account to help with roads. We've seen a measurable impact and positive improvement from the amount of culvert replacements that have been done over the past couple of years. And as we've been talking about in both Imagine Gerwood and in the Trails Committee about the supporting infrastructure that allows for people to park and access our outdoor recreation economy. I do agree with Kyle's statement is that we have growing infrastructure needs and aging infrastructure. And we'd like to make sure that we're set up for success as we continue to welcome fellow Alaskans and people from outside as we overcome the pandemic and open up for full-time business again. Thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Mike, you have a comment?
I apologize if you've already covered this, Kyle, because again, I had to, I've only just come back to the meeting. But do you have any observations or comments on the the work that was done on High Tower to remove that sort of bulge? I've, when I've gone past, I've still seen some flooding issues, but I don't recall how bad it was before.
Oh, it's much better now, you know, because we can put a grader right on the curb line and go straight through and peel it off. Just the nature of way that inlet is, it's, it sits just above the high point. And so sometimes we'll get slush buildup in there and we can peel it out and 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 make it function much better. But yeah, you know, if I had my way, I would take all those bump outs out. I understand the purpose of them. It makes the, it makes the pedestrian much more visible to those who are trying to cross the street. But from a snow removal aspect, they're a big pain because they create these dead corners that we can't put a grader blade into or we're trying to peel it with a loader. And these guys have done a much better job. I would say this crew this year has done a great job of dealing with those. But yeah, having that bump out removed has just made it much easier for that water to get to where it needs to go.
So success.
Yes, I feel it is.
Thank you.
Christina, do you have a comment maybe about the bump out?
Yes, sure do. For the record, for those people who don't know on the call, I live at one five zero High Tower and that's actually my parking spot. So I can attest that the bump out has been a great success over past years. In the transition, when the crews are moving snow from Town Square and placing it into the lot next to us where our dumpster is along that corner, when there is residual buildup from the vehicles going back and forth, what it does is the flow of water coming from Aliaska Highway down to High Tower, if it gets trapped up in any of the transition slush from those vehicles, it does create a little bit of a backup and flooding. Perhaps maybe that is what Mike has observed. Also, unless some, the crew is like really on it during the freeze and thaw, if you don't have that drain cleared, it's, again, it's a very small drain for the volume of water that it that it can be subject to during our rapid freeze ups and our rapid thaws that we've experienced in the recent past. So just two anecdotal observations from my walks as a pedestrian on that corner and as a resident, full-time resident there. But the bump out reduction has been a great improvement. Thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Any other comments about roads? Kaylee?
This is really about future bump outs. And just to sort of make Kyle aware and this group aware that the current plan for the clinic rebuild includes a couple of bump outs next to the clinic on High Tower. So that might be something worth discussing the next time it comes to this board.
First I've heard of that. That's not a very good thing.
I would agree.
Comment, but no, that's, thanks for letting me know that. And if if you're involved with them, I would ask that maybe they could reach out to me so that I can give some input on that because that's something we deal with daily.
Will do.
Thanks for the heads up, Kaylee.
If there's no more questions, let me just go over a summary associated with all this. Get here. So this is just a quick snapshot of the summary of the operating budgets for the service area for two thousand twenty. And overall, we had a total surplus of a hundred and twenty one thousand, which was associated with the different things that we discussed for each individual budget there. Our total operating budget for this year was three point four million dollars. We spent three point two, if we round up, three point three million for for what we did this year. And so, so when you think about a city operation, you know, and we're a small town, but for three point three, we accomplished a lot from police, fire to roads and parks and recs. So so I think everybody who's in charge of the different departments are quite proud with what they did for the year in that area.
I would second that. I think you do a great job and everybody does a great job. And if we were all in a room together, like we will one of these days, we could all give you a hand for the great job you do to keep the budgets in line and to, you know, to get a good return on the taxpayer money. I think you're fiscally very, fiscally very sound. And I want to thank you for putting so much effort into the budgets, Kyle and Margaret. So thanks.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
Two things, again, apologies if I missed this earlier. I was surprised to see the the surplus from the fire department last year. If you've covered this earlier, I'll just go back and listen to the recording.
I can, I can just give you a quick. Well, basically what we had is that we didn't move, so we moved forty thousand from the the capital contribution to help cover the shortage. We didn't, unfortunately, with the way the calendar worked, we couldn't remove the remaining funds. And then the full, the full fund, the full budget amount for repairing equipment was not used by AFD. So to buy new tires or a new horn or whatever, it wasn't fully used. And then there were some IGCs left over that the fire department didn't fully charge for. So between all those combinations, we ended up with fifty seven thousand dollars that was there. And if you go back and listen to the recording, I think there'll be a discussion probably in June as to maybe taking those funds that fell into the undesigned account and putting it back in the capital.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing is there is a virtual applause we can do, so we'll do that.
Yay, virtual applause. That was fantastic. Thank you, Kyle and Margaret, for all of your work.
No problem. This guy pushes us into a little bit of a few other things. I'm going to switch screens here and bring up our our, the packet. So within the packet, why does it do that? Within the packet, you know, it has all this information related to the departments with our budgets for the operating year. But we also want to include just the list of things that we completed in two thousand twenty, both in Parks and Rock, Parks and Rock, Parks and Rec and Roads, Street Maintenance, so that you can just understand all the different projects that are happening out there. It's basically kind of an annual report that we try to give idea. And also in here is a annual report from Chief Weston with the fire department. And then Margaret included all the summaries for the capital, or excuse me, for the GBOS grants, recreation grants that are given out. Here's a report on Parks and Rec. So we split them all up individually to the departments in that area. The one thing I realized we, I could have done, but we didn't do, was have a full report from police. And we'll try to incorporate that in the coming year. But Margaret, do you want to touch on anything related to the nonprofit grants?
Not really. I think that you can take a look at the information that each of them has provided. And I think that this might be helpful. Kyle and I are stepping over each other with our microphones. I think that this will be helpful as we go into our next meeting, which will be hopefully a work session to work on how you want to adjust the grants in the future, what you want to change as far as the applications and the reporting. So this information has been made available to you in the past as well, but we've never really gone over it. I would say that all of our grantees had their challenges with COVID, of course, and so it's good reading.
Yeah.
Margaret.
We didn't want to spend a bunch of time getting into all these details with all the different reports, but we want to make sure that you're aware that these are there. And and if you're looking for some fun Friday night reading, well, this is here for you. So but one thing I want to do is Chief Weston did put together a very nice presentation on the end of year. So I'm going to slide down, down to that and allow for Chief, if you want to talk to this presentation at all.
Well, at first, I guess I could poll the board and see if you've, it was also a video on our social media page. So if everyone has actually seen it, then there's probably no need to actually go over it. But I just wanted But I just wanted to poll the board first on that, if I could, through the chair. Have you seen it?
I'm looking, I'm asking other board members. I have not.
This is Brianna. I have not unless it was in your last email you sent, Michelle.
Um, this came out in January, so, um, I guess I could run through it, uh, super quick. Uh, so first, uh, we just did an in memoriam of, uh, uh, people in the past who've worked with the fire department that we lost in the past year. Recognizing Assistant Chief Grandinetti, uh, John Dufek and the Hope Fire Chief. And then next slide, uh, we also gave out some, uh, Chiefs' accommodation awards, uh, to Sarah Howard for her work. She's been doing a lot of, as you know, she lives at the, in Portage. She's been doing a lot of CPR by herself, uh, in Portage, uh, in the Portage area before EMS arrives. Um, wanted to recognize some community business partners, uh, the Wildlife Center and the Brewery. And then community members, uh, wanted to recognize the gallops and Christina Dixon for mask production. Also the foxes for preventing a large explosion on Gunny Sack Mine Road. Uh, and then CERT Member of the Year was Michael Palca. Next slide. Uh, we gave out service awards, um, and, um, we hadn't given out some awards for a number of years. So I've reinstituted service awards. Uh, most of these people actually have much, are in between the five to 10 or the 10 to 15 and the 20 to 25. Um, so they've got a, like a 10-year award, but they're really at 13 or 14. Uh, so, uh, next slide. Uh, just to recap, we went on 330 and 399 calls, um, and EMS was, uh, 59%. Uh, we had some significant structure fires. Our over loss on our fire loss was over, uh, 2 million, which was basically because of the Echo Ridge loss. Uh, and then we had a number of significant EMS calls. Next slide. Uh, strengths of the team, obviously, uh, even though we had some challenges with training, um, the team is resilient, professional and forward leaning. Next slide. Uh, super number success, successes this year in terms of, uh, getting fire instructors, which we need to be certified. Um, the, the membership started a leadership summit. Um, we adapted to COVID procedures and SCBA's. Um, and we didn't have any, um, COVID exposures in the fire station, which was huge. Uh, we trained one new engineer and our teams are good. Uh, and then the woodlot was also successful. Um, we also completed a number of fundraising goals, which were accomplished mostly by, uh, the COVID grant that we received to replace fundraising activities. Uh, and, uh, thank you to the Rotary for six of the 12, uh, water rescue dry suits. Uh, we replaced a lot of aging equipment for, um, rescue services. And again, thank you to the Board of Supervisors for approving the SCBA's. Uh, the air compressor which arrived, um, on Friday or Thursday. Uh, it's not installed yet, but super happy about that. That was a 27-year-old compressor. Uh, the three thermal imagers, which no longer worked, so replaced those. We use those at every structure fire and then wildfire equipment, we were able to do that under a grant. And then, um, better fire hoods to fight carcinogens. Next slide. Uh, our challenges, again, budget, uh, training in small groups due to COVID, uh, contract negotiations, ambulance and apparatus breakdowns. I can tell you it's no fun to be on an ambulance when it breaks down and you're going to a call with fatalities. That happened. That was no fun. Um, and, um, ALS coverage on the night shifts, uh, which hopefully we're addressing with the contract change. Next slide. Then our goals for 2021, firefighter one, firefighter two, firemore instructors and company officers, EMT one, EMT three, second leadership summit, which we're doing sort of in-house. It's voluntary, uh, firefighter conference and winter boot camp. Um, fundraising goal is water rescue boat. I don't think that's going to happen, but that's our, you know, you know, one of the things that we have to do. Uh, you can see our capital goals. You can see we're advocating for cell services and turn again arm. And then administrative goals, we've already completed lieutenant testing and promotion. We've promoted two, um, improving shift staff and coverage. That's of course tied to the contract. Um, policies and that will, are doing contract negotiation. And then improving wages for staff and paid members is also related to the contract and implementing cancer reduction initiatives, the medicals that we're required to have, that we don't have. I started a GoFundMe for medicals for the fire department, for firefighters, which is kind of silly. Um, but I did that. Um, and so that's another thing we have to some, somehow address, but hopefully we can do that with the contract negotiation, um, improvements. Uh, next slide. And then again, just budget versus staffing considerations. You guys all know this because we've talked about it many times. Uh, six firefighters are needed for NFPA 1720, which is what we need to hold ourselves to, um, for the MOA. And then also, um, uh, six people are needed for a cardiac, uh, medical incident. So if you, somebody has a cardiac arrest, we need six people to run a code. And that's my presentation. Oh, I forgot about, and Bud, I will talk about CERT. Uh, 13 community members, five activations, three prevention activities. Um, and we had a suburban donated to CERT, which we have some fixes to do to make it, uh, functional, but, uh, we're going to get it mechanically checked out. Uh, we got funding for CERT uniforms from, uh, COVID funds. And, uh, yeah, so CERT is moving along. I'm looking forward to CERT actually getting together again when the COVID restrictions are, um, reduced. And maybe there's one more slide.
There is.
Final slide, CERT goals, uh, consistent training again. Um, identifying a CERT volunteer other than me to take over the coordination of it. Um, recruiting new members and there's a lot of interest in CERT at the state level and there, there's actually now a CERT coordinator. All the CERT teams are now meeting and discussing, uh, their CERT training together. And so there's a lot more interest in CERT, uh, statewide. And hopefully there will be funding to also come with that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Yep. So that's kind of a, a summary of our, our 2020 year, which was, you know, as well know, well, very interesting, but things still rolled around. As I, as I say, the, the town never goes to sleep. So, um, so yeah, so it was good.
Mike, you have a question, comment?
Yeah, it's actually a comment on Chief Weston's presentation. One thing I didn't notice that I'd like to point out was, uh, the other advocacy thing, which I think was very successful, that was advocating for, uh, along with many others, but definitely a significant part of it was advocating for the Silver Tip reopening.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Yes, that was very good, Michelle. Thank you for that, for advocating for that, as, as others. Anybody else? Erin?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, looking through this whole report, you know, from what Kyle put together to, um, Michelle's report, it's just, um, it's pretty amazing what, what got accomplished in 2020 and a challenging year. And, um, I just wanted to say that it would be nice if, I don't know if there's somewhere we can put this where more people will access it or see it. Um, it just seems like a really good document showing, um, summary of what, what we accomplished.
Yeah, we could maybe put it to a sidebar on the GPS website.
Yeah, that'd be good. Does this go to anyone, um, with the muni, like the mayor's office or it's just?
Uh, no, we haven't shared it with them. We just share it with the, the Board of Supervisors at, at the local level. Um, uh, no, we haven't.
Okay. Yeah, I was just thinking like, it seems like we've been asked or, you know, the question comes up, like what are the issues for Girdwood? It, it's a good summary document showing what's, what's going on on a yearly basis. So.
Yep, I can share, I may all share it with Anna, uh, the city manager, uh, so that she's just aware of it.
Yeah, that'd be good. Thanks.
I'll suggest our assembly members as well.
Okay, good idea.
Any other comments as always? Thanks for the great presentation.
I have one comment.
Go ahead, Brianna.
Well, well, it wasn't about presentations, which were fantastic and such a long impressive list. Like I am echoing Erin's statement. So anyway, we can share that. And I agree with some of the assembly members or mayoral candidates or anyone like that. Uh, my comment is about tonight's, uh, um, public hearing for Sladen Mole, the naming of the ball fields. I believe it's tonight at 6:00, just in case anyone needs a reminder. I'm planning to tune into that and I believe it's on Teams.
Correct. And, and it also conflicts with the, uh, candidate night for GBOS seats. And so what we've been telling people is that if you have a comment or, um, you know, you want to show support or whatever comment you want to make, you can make the comment and then you can leave and go join the other meeting. Um, it will have, we'll have the public hearing open for hours so that we can gather comments. But, um, thank you for bringing that up, Brianna, because this is related to dedicating the baseball field after Sladen Mole. And if, and for those on the line who don't know, uh, who's Sladen, Sladen was a longtime Girdwood resident, grew up here playing baseball, actually was on a baseball scholarship in California where he was, uh, killed by a drunk driver. So, uh, the community has taken on to name the field, uh, after him. And so we're going through the code process on making that work. And tonight is the public hearing that's required by code.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Correct.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Brianna. Um, anything else on item three, which is the budget review? Hearing nothing, I will go on to public comment. Person's offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Do we have anybody for public comment? Mike?
I think this is public comment. So it's not on the agenda, although it is mentioned at the very top. Um, I personally really do not like, um, Teams. I think there's lots of facility, a lot of capabilities that are missing and lots of things set up in Teams that are sort of antithetical to a, uh, to a public meeting. Um, so I noticed, for example, that depending how you enter the meeting, you have different levels of privilege and priority. So I can, I didn't do so, but I can mute people, um, pretty much anyone in the meeting and other people can't. So there's, it, there's a whole bunch of issues in Teams, which I think makes it a terrible platform. So, uh, I will continue a little bit of advocacy to see if we can move away from it. And back to Zoom.
And just to give, uh, the background on the switch here is that IT contacted me right before the last GBOS meeting saying, uh, we're not going to allow you to do the GBOS meeting by Zoom. And I was like, whoa, 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 we've got it posted. We've got it all figured out. And they said, okay, we'll let you one more, but after that, due to security issues and the recommendation from the federal government, we're not allowing Zoom to be used, used as a host platform that we run. So I can't host a meeting through Zoom. I can still attend a meeting through Zoom, but I can't host a meeting through Zoom, um, while using a MOA computer, which we do now because it ties us to the network. We can pull documents if we need to. Uh, but for the most part, we, we can pull things from, we, we post everything online through the web, uh, through the website.
I'd just like to add to the, for the record, it's a nonsensical distinction because you're using exactly the same software whether you're hosting it or, um, or attending. It's all in the cloud. It just doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
But I will continue my argument with the IT, with the IT department.
I do have a preference for Zoom too, but it, it's what we're dealing with now.
We should find a, we should find a way to go back. Yes, it just doesn't work. This, I can see all sorts of problems. We need to at least reconfigure it. We can't use it in this configuration going forwards.
Correct.
Could someone else host it, um, besides Kyle? And then just have him be the, like, give over, um, leadership ability within the meeting to Kyle?
It could be. I mean, I think it's just more of the aspect of, of us being able to use Zoom for public meetings. So, so I, we will look at different routes to see if we can return ourselves to, to a Zoom platform.
This experiment was useful because, uh, it enabled us to see some of the weaknesses.
Yeah. And, and we've had several solid, small meetings and I've been working with IT to help resolve things. Just, just before this meeting, uh, or, uh, we had a meeting a couple of days ago. I couldn't record the meeting. I had to apply for access. They gave me access to record the meeting because we, we need a public record of each meeting. So. Okay.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, I will close the meeting with, you know, the last statement. Once again, thank you, you and Kyle for all the work and that was done in 2020 under extenuating circumstances. It's nice to live in a community where everybody cares so much and we get a lot done. So thanks. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
We're to adjourn.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks as always, Kyle.
Thanks. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.
Bye.